All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's right now 5:35 PM. Order of business, May 17, 2022, special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. And this is specifically, most importantly, public hearing and comments on, I'm sorry, specifically 2022, 2023 corporate fund budget public hearing. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yes. Dave Abdullah?
Here.
Hassan Ahmad? Okay, he's currently absent. Moby Doon?
Here.
Nancy Brier?
Here.
Robert Coniston?
Here.
Ray Muscat?
Here.
Tom Wenzel?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. This one's going to be read by one of our residents, Mr. Zohair Abdulhaag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Abdulhaag. Next up is number three, agenda approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move approval. It's not the special meeting at a time?
Yeah, number three.
Number three, okay. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the special meeting of May 17, 2022, as submitted.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next up on the agenda is, sorry, public hearings and comment on agenda items only.
Councilor Chair.
Uh, Councilman?
No, go ahead, this is comments.
It's okay. You will have two minutes each to speak. Actually, what I'm gonna do on this one, I want to make sure residents have the opportunity to be able to ask what they want to ask. So I'm gonna make this one, I'm gonna make a change, Madam Clerk, if it's okay with you. I'm gonna switch this one to three minutes, if you don't mind. Is that okay? So residents will have three minutes. Please state your name, the street you live on, and the city that you live in. Come on up. Well, I'm sorry, actually, you know what? Do we have to vote on this first? Yeah. Okay, so can somebody make the motion to open this?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council open a public hearing at 5:38 PM for the purpose of hearing comments and/or objections, if any, to the proposed corporate fund budget for the city of Dearborn Heights for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, as outlined in 5A.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Bedun. Is there any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. All right, we're gonna go ahead and start with public comments. Like I mentioned, I'm gonna give residents an opportunity to speak three minutes. Please go ahead.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Zohair Abdulhaag, 354 Rosemary. Thank you. I have a question for our controller in the budget.
Mr. Abdulhaag, I'm gonna bother you for a sec. Yeah, as close as you can to the microphone, please.
No problem, I will yell.
Yeah, because actually our microphones are kind of down, so.
Okay. No problem.
Thank you.
I'm soft spoken, spoken most of the times. But for the sake of the residents, I looked at the mileage which we have for the Public Act 345. I have two versions. One is 8.1086 mils, which comes to $11,572,019. In the second version, I don't know which one is newer. It's 7.5059. I looked at the expenses for all the accounts of Act 345 and health care. I found out discrepancy between the revenue and the expenses. On the first one, where we have 8.1086, in the expenses, there was shortage of $220,000 and some change. And if we go with 7.5059, the shortage will be $1,078,016. My question is, which one is the correct one in the final budget, which is in front of the city council to approve? And if there is discrepancy between the expenses and the revenue, how we are covering it in the budget?
Controller, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you. As council will recall, as council will recall, the, in one of our previous budget sessions, we had a change in the public safety, public safety employer pension contribution, which dropped from $6 million down to $5.186 million. With that reduction, that brought the rate down from $8.10 down to $7.51. So if you look at your proposed draft resolution that was with your package for this evening, you'll see on page one of the draft resolution, if you go there, you'll see the $7.5059 on page one in the table. Page one, you got it? Does everybody have that there? Okay, you're good?
So.
So let me, so then what happens is this. So the rate dropped because the expenses dropped. We're paying for the employer contributions for police and fire, $5.186 million. We're going to pay for the pay-go health care for retirees, $3.764 million. We're going to be paying for, out of this levy, operating expenses of the PA 345, operating expenses for the PA 345 pension system. And we're also going to be making an OPEB, future funding contribution of $1,062,500. Those four expenses will tot, yes, those four expenses will total $10.677 million, which is just slightly under the PA 345 levy that we're estimating for fiscal year July 1, 2022. And you can see, we're estimating $10.691 million. Now, you might ask, why isn't it right on the, right on the, right on, and that takes into consideration tax capture. So that's very important also. So the $10.691 million that you see on page one of your proposed draft resolution, that takes into consideration the TIF capture. And then you have delinquent personal property tax that you must take into consideration, that we will not collect everything. You'll collect approximately 99.8% of the levy. And when that, so you're basically backing away a little bit to make sure that you have enough dollars there to pay the bill. And that hits it right, the hammer hits the top of the nail perfectly. So again, the rate is, that we're proposing will be seven, the final rate is 7.5059, generating $10.691 million, covering $10.677 million worth of expenses. Thank you, Your Honor.
Did you adjust the expenses to reflect this on the new budget?
Yes.
I'm looking at the latest one, which I have on the internet. It does not show that. So I wish that you put this out, so the public can see it, and we don't have any misinformation or misconception that you are short over a million dollars on this.
It was actually about Thursday, it went out to the public.
Okay.
On Thursday. And also, just, I mean, here.
This is, you know, which I printed today, actually. It shows that discrepancy.
Well, if we, if we're still sitting on an old, on an old budget that's on the internet, for sure that would come down. And we'd put the revised one that's up, that's going to council. We can make sure that that's up there for Monday, or Tuesday's meeting, excuse me.
And obviously, you will still have, as a resident, there's still enough time to be able to look over that. And if there's any questions or concerns, we're gonna be actually voting on the budget on Tuesday. And obviously, there'll be public comments on agenda items on that day.
I just would like, you know, that.
No, 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 you're right.
You know, so it is publicly out there, so we know exactly what we're collecting and what we're spending. So when I look at it, I don't see a million dollars difference.
You're correct.
And just for you too, because it's on you at the end of the day.
Right.
You're going to approve the budget.
Well, let me, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
I want to make it very clear, the council has the updated final version of the budget in draft form before you this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for that though, Madam Clerk, I don't know who, actually, the, can we make sure that this new budget is up by tomorrow? The one that the council members have on the website?
Who's it on?
Is it gonna be, would it be? Okay.
Yes, to answer your question, whoever handles the website, we'll make sure we give them the final, the final, final product, so that it gets out there, yes.
It's on the agenda, so this is.
This is, but that's not the budget, that's the resolution to approve the budget.
No, 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 hang on, hang on. No, you have the budget in front of you this evening, in final form, the resolution is the budget. Now, the line item detail that is behind the scenes, that supports that document, if you want that on the website, we can put that line item detail on the website also,
Please do.
if you want that.
Please do.
But you, that, if. The resolution is the final budget, which was on the website.
Okay.
Is it online?
Yes.
The updated?
Yes.
Yep. All right, okay.
Just want to give the residents enough time so they can go over it before you approve anything.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would agree that, yes, the resolution's on there, but I would agree, or I would want a specific line item.
Sure.
full budget on there, so that residents can have an opportunity to be able to check whatever they want to check.
Yeah, sure, 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 sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zohair. Anybody else from the audience has a question or concern? Because remember, this meeting is specifically this, and that's it. This is your, one of your last chances. Yes, three minutes, please.
Hello, Rachel LaPointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. I have a variety of questions that I know you guys may or may not have the answers to. So regarding the union negotiations that are going on, I believe four of our seven or eight union contracts are in negotiations right now, and we'll have even more coming up soon. If, and if a pay increase is negotiated, would you guys then have to do a budget amendment to accommodate the salaries?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The answer to that question would be yes.
Great, I love yes or no answers, because they're quick. Saves us time. I've heard that overtime has been cut in GPW, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about cutting the overtime costs. I think that's great. Do we have a list of how, like in GPW, things would get prioritized if they basically run out of time to get everything done because they're not allowed to have overtime? So for example, a lot of people are concerned that their streets aren't swept, right? We always hear that. And I was thinking, if they don't have overtime, they had a water main break, they've used up all their hours, what's getting cut? And that might be something more for the administration to think on. I don't know that you guys have that answer, but it's just a thought as we're budgeting these things and trying to cut overtime. So that was more of a comment.
I don't know if Robert Coniston's on, but we'll go ahead and just.
It's okay, he wouldn't need to answer that, maybe, if he, you know. And then, if someone's salary on the budget did not match their contracted salary, which one takes precedence? The contract, I would assume, would take precedence if the budget is different.
I presume, Controller?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the contract, if, the contract's gonna dictate who gets paid. We try to match that, you know, what they get paid. The contract's gonna dictate, period. So then what happens here is, we've done our very best to match what we think that, that dollar value is versus what they're going to get paid. Now, remember, it's a budget. And when you look at a departmental budget, you have multiple people on a salary line item. There's not one, there's, with the exception of the three elected officials, basically, you have multiple people on a salary line item. There's a lot that happens throughout the year. People get promoted, people, people get demoted, people leave, people retire. So at the end of the day, we do our very best to match salary to, for that, for the, for the budget of fiscal year to the contractual salaries, and contractual salaries would dictate and control.
Thank you.
Is there, Rachel, if you don't mind, I mean, without saying who that specific person is, but if you don't mind, maybe after you, you're done with.
I can speak to you after about that.
If you could at least write a little name, write the name of the person that you're concerned about, and then just give it to the controller, and he'll look into it.
Yeah. And then, one last comment, kind of. I appreciate very much the better detail on the budget. Like, I really love that we were splitting things up a little bit better by department, so we could kind of understand that better. I think that was excellent. It did seem like some things could, for next year, be split even more, like legal fees and stuff, if we were going to split that better among departments. I know the Planning Commission said that they use a lot of legal fees, but it's not in their department. So for next year, I think that that would be really helpful for everybody to see more how the legal fees are spread among the departments, since we started doing that with the HR this year, since the labor lawyer was in there. I thought that was great, though.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good point, but I do want to tell you, Mr. Sabuda here, put together a budget probably three weeks, I think maybe four, after getting into office.
Yeah.
And for, I can speak for myself, I could probably barely sign my name three, four weeks into a new job, nevertheless, put a whole city budget together.
Yeah.
So himself and the rest of his team, Mariana, everybody else involved, put a lot of hours into getting this budget together.
Oh, yeah. I appreciate that a lot, I know.
I'm glad and somewhat surprised that they were able to put it together with so little time.
Mm-hmm.
But they did.
Yeah.
For next time, I'm sure they'll take that consideration.
I think next time, I think that would be great to see even more detail on that. And then, one last thought about, maybe if we could budget more for emergencies, like if there was some sort of rain event that we needed to clean up, or some other natural disaster, like a tornado goes through, budgeting some sort of rainy day fund or emergency fund for things, like, I know last year we had to get extra trash pickup. So that kind of thing, I think, considering our known issues, we should have that somewhere.
There is some money for that, and it is budgeted for.
What department is that in? I feel like I missed that, that's weird.
Water's got about $12 million, roughly.
For emergencies?
Do we have an emergency rainy day fund?
Well, what you have is you, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so what you have is you have, you have unrestricted fund balance is basically, would be theoretically your emergency situation if you had something that was absolutely disastrous, okay? We do not have a line item specifically for, for if come what if. There's nothing in that budget for that. And I would not recommend that. So emergencies are, are done, with the exception of a rainy day fund that's, that's set up by council and is in the, and is a ordinance. You have a disaster, it's going to be, you need to be swift, and then you need to manage your budget. Because it's health first, health and safety first. And you always want to take care of health and safety first. So that's how you handle your emergencies here. I want to remind everyone that we are overspending, and we're using fund balance to cover that overspending for the fiscal year. I don't want to bring back the old chart, but as, as we talked about back at the very first meeting that we had in April, to the clip of 1.9 million annually. And that's how you're funding this budget, with one-time dollars. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
What, were you all set, on your end?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
So a follow-up question to that, Mr. Controller, is, one of the, one of the things that we've done with the states, we're supposed to have two months of reserves, or 16%. That's one of the things that we signed with the resolution at one point.
Right.
Right now, we're obviously much less than that.
Right.
What's the plan to get back to what we signed or approved as a resolution on the council? What's the plan for that?
As of right now? I would have to go back, and I have not looked at what has been pre-submitted. So I don't, I know something has been submitted to the, to the state of Michigan. So I would need to, to follow up with that first before I could respond back to you.
And we agreed with the state at 16% at the time. 16% in reserves. And obviously, I know we don't have that right now.
Right. That's right.
One of the things that I was gonna, I have on my notes here to, to speak with you about is slashing overtime. Currently, overtime between police and fire by itself is around 1.8 million. And then, of course, you got other overtime. Now, some, some particular departments, it makes a little bit more sense, like, for example, DPW, which I know are short-staffed by, I think, seven or eight people.
They're five, yes.
Is it five now, okay? And I know police is a little bit short-staffed, too.
Yes, seven.
But at the same time, our overtime is definitely too high.
Yes, sir.
And that percentage, do you know what it is at right now? Instead of 16%, what are we at right now?
The 16% of spending?
Right.
Of, I don't, I don't have that figure in front of me. I would have to count that and get back to you on that number.
Okay, because the concern is, that's the resolution that we signed, all of us as council members, agreeing with the state to stay around that number. And one of the conversations I've had with the resident, and it is maybe cutting some of the overtime that is quite drastic. And in, in, in most departments, or most businesses, when there's a person missing, somebody else jumps on and helps take over. That would, that would be obviously the most ideal. One of the things that were brought up was maybe the departments can, instead of being given automatic overtime, bringing, you know, monthly overtime as far as what, what budget they're gonna need for overtime for that particular department, so that we're not at, I think it's like 2 million something in overtime total, which I think is way too high.
2.7. We're estimating 2.7 for, for fiscal year 21, 22. Yes, that's what we projected.
Right. So something definitely needs to be done about that. But right now, I know we have two months in reserves, right?
Like I said, I'd have to take a look at it, and I would have to count the number, and then get back to you with that.
Okay, if you don't mind, when you do get back with me, Controller.
I can do that.
If you could email it to all of us, all the council members, please. Prior to Tuesday's meeting, if you don't mind.
So you want the 6:30, 2023? Or you're looking at current this year?
I don't, yeah, for current, for the budget, upcoming budget. How much do we have in reserves? And what is projected for the upcoming budget?
Okay, so 21, 22, for 21, 22 and 22, 23.
Please.
Okay.
But send it to all the council members also, please.
Yes, sir.
Before Tuesday's meeting, obviously.
Yes, sir.
Let's, Councilman, let me have the members of the audience go. Come on up, Vince.
Vince Trupkowski, Columbia Street. Mr. Chair, based on what you learned earlier, Governor Whitmer's, order to record public meetings, are you willing to put some money aside for the remaining, as soon as you figure out what you're gonna do? There's like seven meetings, possibly, for Planning Commission?
Okay.
And that, so are you willing to make that money available?
So what he's referencing there, Mr. Controller, and for those council members, I read in a newspaper article that there's a mandate from the state, from Governor Whitmer, that all public meetings have to be recorded in one format or another. Now, obviously, you realize that in a newspaper, it's not gonna be all the details of what the mandate is. But all public meetings have to be recorded in one format or another, whether it's video or audio, and it has to be kept for one year. Now, what I don't know is the specific details on it. So I had a little sticky note on my desk for tomorrow to speak with the clerk about it, but then while speaking here, she was looking at me. So I said, you know what, at least I'll let her know right now. She's in the process of looking into it. Now, in the initial stages of looking into it, and that's not the final answer, but she believes in her initial stages of looking into it just before the meeting, she believes it's just for state meetings only. That's the mandate. With that being, let's, let's pretend that's the case. If that's the case, she don't look into the specifics. But even if that's the case, I can speak for myself as a council member, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not the body. I'd prefer everything be recorded. I'd prefer residents have access to every single open meeting, period. So I would be all for it, and if something can be done, I'd be all for it, and you'd get a yes vote out of me every time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, as you know, you've already spoken, but I'm allowed to ask you.
I'm sorry, but I just want to draw your attention. The money is there. It qualifies from the peg money.
Okay.
Because that's what the money is for.
Like I said, the first step is, our clerk is looking into the mandate, and then the second step would be, if we could somehow implement it, again, myself, I'm saying it publicly, I would be all for it. I definitely think every meeting should be accessible to all members of the audience. Look, let me give you an example. Like, right now, we have a city council meeting, and it's on budget. We have probably, I don't know, 20, 25, whatever, residents, okay? But we have 63,000 residents, and all of them should have access to it. So I'm, I'm in agreement, Vince. Any other members of the audience? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to Madam Clerk to Zoom, and then, Councilman Coniston's got a question? You all set? Okay. Madam Clerk, anybody on Zoom?
I don't see any hands up on Zoom.
Okay. Seeing none? Next up is item five B. This is two thousand-
No, it's not, it's not. Just a mouse.
Okay. So next up is two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Corporate Fund Budget, Public Hearing. This is actual close of the public hearing.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
Uh, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council closed the public hearing at six PM on the sharp, on the dot, as outlined in five A. Support.
Motion made by Councilman Bedun at six oh one PM.
Six o'clock on my watch, I swear. My watch at six.
He's got a cheap watch. He's got a cheap watch. Yeah, the Mickey Mouse watch.
It really is, it's fourteen bucks on Amazon.
Yep, that's what I thought. Seconded by Councilman Muscat. Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is members of the public. First, we'll start with comments from council members. Any comments?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, nothing to do about the budget, uh, but, uh, just wanna, my travels last week, I went through Allen Park on trash pickup day. And, uh, as I traveled through Allen Park, I seen no cars on the road. Absolutely none, zero. Every trash can lined up on the grass. I mean, just as, almost like straight as, like somebody shot a laser beam down, down the grass line there. Everybody's trash cans put out. And I then stopped at City Hall there, and I was notified that they don't have very many complaints, if any. And their trash pickup people are GFL. And it just bothers me that even on my own block, I see trash cans lined up in the street, cars on the street on trash pickup day. Is the people in Allen Park better than we are? Are they better than we are? Uh, a- and, you know, and a lot of places have it as a misdemeanor. It's not even just a ticket, parking ticket. And I, you know, we, we spend thousands of dollars sending out flyers, our Dearborn Heights magazine, and in that magazine tells you a lot of the ordinances, and we do this, um, at different changes of the season. Why, why are we like this, folks? Um, the tall grass, the weeds. I, I'm just beside myself, and, and I don't know what to say or do anything anymore. It's just, it, it's horrible.
Bad image for the city.
Yeah, and it is a bad image for the city. I, I mean, I would, you know, I don't even wanna call out other cities around us, but, you know, I could take a picture of a house in a different city, and a house in our city, and put them together, and you wouldn't guess the one, which houses, in what city. So folks out there, come on. Uh, you know, we've got a lot of people in this city that take care of their property. Uh, I'm just, I'm, I'm beside myself. I, I, I just don't know what to say anymore. It's not that difficult to put your trash cans in the right spot, and it's not difficult to get your car off the street. It's not. Okay? There's ways to do it. Gotta be, just gotta do it. And that's all I have to say for today.
Thank you, Councilman.
Council Chair.
Any, yes, Councilman, go ahead.
All right, I'd like to speak to the same issue with the trash. I personally experienced it this time, and I know my area has for the last three weeks out of the last four. Um, my trash pickup day was Friday morning. The only thing that was picked up Friday evening was the recycle. Uh, Saturday, they came and they got the yard waste. I called yesterday because myself and three neighbors left our cans out with our regular trash till yesterday. I was told by the lady at Priority that, um, she would make all the notes and get to it, and I reinforced that thought with saying that I was a councilwoman, and I'm tired of getting the complaints. So, she said it would be taken care of yesterday. However, they made it at eight forty-five AM today. This is Tuesday. Our trash day was Friday. So we've really gotta work at this. And I agree with Ray, the people have to respond better in where they place their trash cans, and, uh, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Okay. There has been, um, without getting into the details, but there has been a change with Priority, and you're gonna, you're gonna see some improved, um, service in the next few days. I, I can't get into the details, but there's been a change.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constance next. Yes, Constance and the mayor.
Go ahead. I was gonna address some of the issues, so I did talk-
Wait, guys, please, guys, guys.
So I did this, I had the owner of, uh, Priority called me today twice, and just trying to, uh, figure out what's going on. So, in the past, we've had, uh, a limit on, uh, the lawn bags, you know, where, about ten, I think was the top, was the, um, I think ten was the maximum. So the, the owner actually sent me some pictures, and, uh, there's one resident, actually, he's got a big house, so he has his, uh, yard waste, it actually covers the whole block. Eighty-five bags that had out there. And Priority actually picked every bag. There was another house, he sent me pictures of, we counted fifty bags. So that's the issue that we're having. It's not like they weren't, they're not out there, because they don't wanna just take the maximum, you know, the ten bags, or five bags, or whatever. They're taking all the bags. They're actually going through each house and taking whatever's outside. And that's what set them up, set them back, is the amount of bags that they have to pick up. There was one truck actually filled, they went down half a block and they filled the truck. So they had to go, as you know, I mean, it takes a while to go unload it and come back. So that was the biggest issue. So they actually, in the past, without mentioning their names, you know, we had the previous company, we were lucky to get two trucks on a given week to take yard waste. Priority Waste actually has four trucks just taking care of, uh, yard waste. So they had four trucks allocated because they knew that in May, it's gonna be heavy, uh, yard waste days. So they allocated four trucks to Dearborn Heights, and they still couldn't keep up. So that was the biggest concern, is because they're trying to satisfy Dearborn Heights and taking whatever is put out there. But it's actually, it backfired on them, because they were like taking everything from residents. So, we're gonna sit down with them again, and we're gonna talk, we're gonna put limitations on how many bags they can put out there, just to be fair for all the city residents, not just the few homes that they put dozens of bags, you know, with that. Uh, you know, calling us ahead of time, or even calling Priority Waste ahead of time to tell them, hey, we have that many bags, you know, so they know, because planning, you know, they do plan for average like ten, ten bags for, or five bags per home, but when somebody puts eighty-five bags, you know, so you're talking about, you know, eighty, ten homes with the bags.
The only thing on that, Mr. Mayor, with due respect to them, I can see how it could cause a problem on a block, two, three, four, or five. And I can see maybe two, three, four, five, maybe twenty residents did that. But they stuff, definitely, and I had, I had a conversation with one of their representatives. Um, they definitely have a glitch in their system. There's been whole neighborhoods missed, including today. A full neighborhood was missed, uh, north of Warren Avenue, and some residents contacted me. I got ahold of them, he said he's sending a truck right out, so he gave, I guess if you wanna call, good customer service, on that end, and getting the truck out there right away. But there's still too many glitches missed. Uh, I'm gonna tell you my personal opinion on this. Anytime a resident knows who the garbage company is, it means they're not doing a good job. Because it's very similar, like in my business, I've always had a thing in my real estate business, if a home seller or a home buyer knows who the title company is, it means they're not doing a good job. And if the, the, the real, or the buy, the seller, I should say, knows who the mortgage company is, it means the mortgage company's dropping the ball. And in general, with most residents, I can tell myself, before I got on the council, you know, ten, twelve, fifteen years ago, I had no idea who our garbage collector is, and I didn't care. As long as they got the job done, that was good. But if I did get concerns on a consistent basis on my house, I would definitely know who they are. So that's the point I'm making. They definitely have glitches in their system, and I'm hoping, remember, we, we had a conversation about that, I'm hoping, I know you said you're working on getting a study session soon, and I'm open to that, to bring them in here and answer some of the questions that some of the council members have and some of the residents have. I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt, because they did start new, and I've told a lot of people that, look, they've been here for, you know, it's, it's not been, you know, a year or so, obviously. Yeah, it's been about three months. So they definitely should have their stuff in order by now. But again, they did make a major change, Priority did, without saying it publicly, and that should make some, some serious, uh, hopefully for the better.
Well, Council Chair, uh, I, I recommended at the last meeting that they actually wanna come down to the next meeting, so, like, you know, ahead of time, so schedule forty-five minutes or, uh, thirty to forty-five minutes meeting at the next council meeting, so next Tuesday.
Okay, I don't know, I'll, I'll check for next Tuesday, but I'll definitely get them on one way or another for a study session. Madam Clerk, can you guys put me down, and we'll, we'll talk tomorrow? Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you. Do you have something to say?
Yes, Council. Thank you, Council Chair. And Mr. Subuda, having been in, uh, worked in Lansing, you're probably familiar with the term backfill. So we might be able to, for our, we were audited by the state, as you probably know, they said we need to have a, a healthy fund budget, at, at least sixteen percent of fund balance, or less than that, but we have the air money, might be able to use that. Let's say we could use it for something in the police department, the big expensive police and fire, and then that money saved used to, uh, backfill for this year. That's just something to think about.
We use two million of that for that. It's two million used.
Well, there already is.
Yeah, two million.
Two point one.
Two point one.
Yeah, Chair's correct.
Uh, Priority Waste, Paul Ruthenberg, I mean, the city had, a while ago, Mr. Miatki will remember, a lot of problems with Peter Ruthenberg. They went out of business, they had commercial clients who were, uh, the, the trash pickup was demanding cash payments because they said they hadn't been paid in weeks. Um, is Paul Ruthenberg, he's not, is he just an officer, is he a-
He's a manager. He's a manager. So they're, they're, the owner of the company, actually, I talked to today. Paul is the manager, and there's still queue levels above him.
Well, his family's been in the trash business for a long time, they've been in a lot of cities. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Constance.
Council Chair.
Yes, just, just a quick statement on my end. Um, spoken with the police chief today, and I just want him to say it publicly, they're gonna be coming down hard on people speeding, playing games with motorcycles, uh, stopping traffic, um, on Ford Road. All this stuff is gonna stop, and I'll just say it directly, the chief is just not happy. So for those that enjoy speeding and acting like idiots, I'll just say it straight up, you're not gonna be happy with the police department pretty soon, next few weeks. So that stuff's gotta be cut out, because you're putting a lot of people's lives in danger. Thank you. Councilman.
Thank you so much, uh, Council Chair. And I'll, you know, just give a little bit of good news. I actually had a conversation with Paul, the manager, who called me over the weekend after I emailed him. Um, and if there's one thing that you know, when it comes to, you know, waste management, I feel like the city really has PTSD of what has happened in the past. And like the mayor said, we won't name, you know, what's happened. So I had this conversation with Paul, and I swear, I absolutely love Paul. Uh, believe it or not, he was so welcoming, he understood, he shared our frustration. Um, he, he had me sold to where I couldn't even say anything to him. I said, he told me, we're wrong, it needs to be fixed, it's gonna be fixed, it's happening, give me a week. I couldn't even say anything to him. I said, Paul, I have nothing to say, hung up the phone. Uh, I think Priority Waste is actually gonna do a good job, like, like the, uh, Council Chair said, it's only been three months, no excuses, not even if they collect eighty bags, no excuses, but I promise you, it's going to get better. You ha, and, and, and I'm, I am just speaking verbatim, the words that Paul told me. Uh, he seemed very sincere, like they said, well, they'd have told me not to say nothing, but all those were released from, uh, Priority Waste who weren't doing a good job in Dearborn Heights, and the new manager now that's gonna be taking over Dearborn Heights is Paul. I told him that anytime I hear a complaint, Paul, I'm sharing your contact number with the residents. He said, please do. So he's all open for it. Uh, secondly, I know, uh, we had the grass recently, you know, cut in, at the Warren Valley Golf Course, and by Mr. Issa and his company. Uh, I appreciate them for doing that. Um, and I just kind of, you know, maybe we can get a quick moment of silence recently. A, a family friend of ours to this community was hit, uh, while he was riding a motorcycle. He actually passed away, uh, as they were pulling out of a business on Ford Road. So if we can go ahead, Council Chair, have a moment of silence for the family of Lathan, uh, who, who just passed away. Uh, may he rest in peace. Thank you for that, Council Chair, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Any other council members have any comments? Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, thank you, Council Chair. Um, I'm not gonna lie to everyone and say, I, I understand a hundred percent of this budget, because there's so many things that have happened through the budget hearings in each department. Things were said, there, mistakes were made, and they were gonna be corrected. I don't know if they're corrected. There were so many things. We're taking, uh, uh, we're taking the administration's word that all these things are gonna be taken care of. Um, and, uh, it was just said, uh, by the Controller that we were overspending, um, about a million, over a million and a half dollars, whatever it was. Um, why can't, you know, why can't we overspend on our contract employees, our, our union employees? We overspend on everything else. I, I feel that we gotta sharpen our pencils here, and, you know, they say that this budget is fluid, which means it could be changed. But, I mean, I can't remember really changing a budget after, since I've been on city council, unless something's come up with one of the directors, can't come up and said they needed more money for a fire engine or something like that. But it's all, it's been said throughout the hearings that, you know, that it can be changed, and I don't know how, what the process is, and I mean, should it be changed before we approve the budget? But everyone knows that I am, uh, backing our union members in their contract negotiations to get as much as they can, as, as much as they deserve, I should say. They deserve, they deserve a lot, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. And, um, let me say, the budget, I'd, I'd like to have, I don't know, are we having one more budget?
We're having the final approval and vote on it at the next city council meeting Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, a week from tonight?
Right.
Yeah, there, there again, I mean, once it's approved, uh, it's pretty hard to change things. It's kinda, say, I don't know the procedure, I should probably know it, but I don't know how many people here know the procedure about changing the budget before or after it's approved.
Wait, wait, let me-
Yeah, that's, go ahead.
You can always request for a budget amendment.
Yeah, I know, we, we do that a lot, but I mean, that's af- after, I mean, I'd like to have things that people want done before a budget's approved, because, you know, once it's approved, then it's, it's hard to change things.
I think the-
The Controller gave us a- Okay. But, but, but in all fairness, though, Councilman, I mean, we've had about, what was that, like, like, ten, twelve, eight, whatever it is, meetings on this. So, you know, there's been many times, and I, I know you brought up some things, obviously, there's been many times, and made discussions on all the specifics, so it's not like we haven't had the opportunity as council members or, or residents to be able to, to, to bring up discussions on specific items. If there's some, one thing or whatever it is that's specific, I mean, we could bring it up if it hasn't been brought up before. We've had ample opportunity to be able to have that discussion back and forth. And, of course, on Tuesday, when we vote on it prior to that, during the public hearing, I mean, obviously, it's not gonna be changed on the spot more likely, but somebody that has a major objection, that's when they can bring it up. As far as changes to the budget later on, yeah, it can be done, but there's obviously revenues and expenditures. So if we have a fifty-seven million dollar budget, and somebody, let's say, Councilman Bedun says, well, I think we should spend, I don't know, two million dollars on, uh, on, on this, you know, well, then that two million's gotta come from somewhere else, or we gotta add, we gotta add additional revenue, which in this case would be, you know, I don't know, taxes or any other particular format. So that's, yes, it is fluid, but if you're gonna, something's gotta be canceled out to add something, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, 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 I respect your, with all due respect, I respect your, your comments there, but every time I did make a comment about it, it said, you know, Mr. Councilman, that, you know, this budget's fluid and it could be changed, and that's the only response I ever got, it wasn't say, hey, let's set up a special meeting to hear about everyone's concerns, you know, residents and city councilmen, what, what do they think about the budget, like, in today, the budget hearing? You know, what, what do they think needs to be changed? I don't think anyone said, except for, uh, uh, Rachel LaPointe, about the, you know, what would we do if the contracts were, uh, raises were given to the, the, kind of, the union employees? And they said, well, the budget would be amended. I mean, it would just say, it'd be amended, so, you know, you gotta cancel stuff out? I mean, what's the procedure? I mean, you just, what do you cancel out? I mean, what department, I mean, it's just, I, I, I'm just confused about this whole process. If you want something, how you go about getting it? I mean, it, it's impossible, probably.
Well, I wouldn't say impossible. Uh, Mr. Controller, would you like to answer that, Councilman, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there is a budget process. Okay, we go through it almost every council meeting. Uh, you voted on multiple budget amendments over the, since I've been here, and, um, what ends up happening here is, the recommendation is usually you're, you're reducing one line item and increasing another line item, or you're increasing a revenue line item in order to spend more. Uh, at the end of the day, uh, there are times also when, when fund balance is also utilized. But all that is clearly communicated to the council, and I, I can name at, at least, uh, I, I believe there were at least two budget amendments since I've been the, the Controller. Um, don't hold me to that, but the, I, the budget amendments come to the council, they've been here, and, and you voted on them. Uh, and that's all I have to say on that issue.
You know, I, 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 I voted on several budget amendments, but not one time do I remember saying, we're going to add this much money, and then we're gonna take this much money from someone else. I don't ever remember that, ever.
I don't remember the specific one, but I know we have.
Yeah. And a lot of times, it's just, uh, it's a budget amendment, the money's in that fund, and we're changing it around, we're taking money from something, doing something else in that fund. That's, it's already been approved, you know, it's already been in, in the budget.
Okay.
I mean, it, yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Let me make it very clear. I can say multiple times, we've reduced expenditures a- and increased expenditures on other line items within the operating fund, and that's the way you're supposed to do it. Okay, you do not wanna do a budget amendment across, uh, operating funds. Okay? So, you've had five council hearings on this operating budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. We've covered every line item, eighty-seven pages, one hundred and eight million dollars in, one hundred and nine million dollars in revenue you've seen, and you've seen one hundred and eighteen point one million dollars in expenses. seen, and you've seen $118.1 million in expenses. You've seen it all, over five budget hearings. And we've made that recommendation, and you have that recommendation before you this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. But up to, up to Councilman, up to including, during any of those meetings, if whether it's you, Councilman Ahmad, Councilman Constance, whoever it is, brings up a particular budget item and we all negotiate it, obviously, it's a democracy. So even if you brought up something, or I brought up something, I could agree with you or disagree with you. But at the end of the day, we as a council body are going to vote if we're going to make that change to the budget. Because at the end of the day, the budget is brought forward by the administration, but it's not, it is not up to them. At the end of the day, it is up to us as far as what we do in the budget within the expenditures and the revenues that we have. And so even if you had something specific and you would have brought it, and I know you brought some stuff forward, and I'm not saying you didn't, but at the end of the day, all of us as a body would agree or disagree to either make that change or not make that change. And everybody has ample opportunity.
You know, if my memory serves me right, I don't think we changed, as a council, changed anything during the budget.
Yeah, we did. We went through like 87, 90 pages, almost.
Yeah, I know, we did, but I mean, it's...
And let's talk about the elephant in the room. And I'm going to throw it out. I think what you're referencing is obviously some of the employees. And a lot of us as council members have said how we feel about it, including myself. I've said, you know, I'm all for making sure that they are paid fairly and equitably. I personally, as a person, as a council member, have no problem with that. We've also had multiple closed sessions on that, where we had deep, 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 deep conversation with administration, with the mayor, and with HR about that. And obviously, I can't state what the specific conversations were, because it was in a closed session. But that particular item, and I'm talking about the elephant in the room, has been addressed. Is it to the satisfaction of each and every one of us? Probably not. But that's a part of, whenever you have a body of seven, of anything, we're not all going to be in agreement. And when you have multiple bodies of any administration or any government, you know, in this particular case, you've got the executive or administrative branch, and you've got us, the legislative branch, we may not always be in disagreement, in agreement. And all of us, including yourself, have, of course, brought that forward. And I'm just bringing up the elephant room, because that's what I think you're referencing, unless you're referencing something else.
And just that and a couple other things, but, you know, I thank you for, you know, verbally, you know, stating your opinion on the fairness that we need. That's...
I agree.
...spoken up about that. And now, as far as the contra, the budget approval, I know only the corporate part of it has to be approved by June, first of June or something. How's that, how's that work? Or what is that?
We'll be approving it at the next council meeting.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying, what has, by law, what part of the budget has to be approved?
All of it.
All of it?
All of it, yes. In order to start the fiscal year, in order to start the fiscal year July the 1st, and you want to spend out of the operating funds, it is recommended, and Public Act 2 of 1968 clearly states that you need to have an appropriation in order to spend money.
Recommended?
I'm recommending. The law says, Public Act 2 of 1968 says, you need an appropriation to spend money. That's what it says, plain as day. And this, this spending document allows you to do that. So all 11 operating funds are set up for you so that you can operate from day one going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And then what I had the comptroller do, um, I like, well, sorry, can't pull it up here, but you guys know which one I'm referencing, we get so much papers. But what I had the comptroller do, because of that specific subject, and I commend you for being upfront and honest about the fact that either you, I, or any one of us are CPAs or financial analysts, et cetera, et cetera. So I get that. I totally get that. And because of that, I asked the comptroller, in a meeting with him, I said, I'd like you to, in regards to the specific resolution that we will be passing and voting on, that's ultimately what you'll be voting on. And that's this particular one right here, 58 specifically, but it's the one that was in the initial part of the budget, right here, the resolution, okay? And on this one, I asked the comptroller, and he obliged, and I appreciate that, I said, you know, there's a lot of numbers here, there's a lot of things that are going to be voted on, and this particular resolution is a different format from the format, at least, I speak for myself, that had previously been used in the past, which was, if you recall, Councilmen, some of those older Councilmen, they've been here a while, we do one line at a time, if you recall. You remember that? And each and every council member would read one line. The comptroller's got a new format. I think it's a better one, honestly. I like it personally. But with that being the case, I asked him to reference each one of these numbers, you know, you can't see every number here, but I asked the comptroller to reference each one of those line items in the resolution to a specific page in the budget, and that would be in this booklet here. That's where he's referencing, the 90 pages or so, to reference it in there where we specifically discussed it. So, for example, if you had, you know, federal state grants, okay? I don't have that particular page with the numbers on there, but he put on that page, like, let's say, you know, 82. You go to page 82, and you see where we had the full conversation on that. So he did make it as, and I appreciate it, as easy as possible, but to be clear, it's still not easy. This is complex stuff, and I appreciate your comment on that.
Council Chair.
What, just make sure, were you all set?
Thank you, Council Chair.
Okay.
Councilman Wenzel.
In the past, one thing I learned when I became a city councilman, there was items that were brought up, and it would be like to purchase a new truck, and they would say, well, you know, it was budgeted for. That doesn't mean you vote yes on it. You can vote no on that.
Correct.
When it comes up through the year. So when somebody said, we budgeted $256,000 for something, doesn't mean that's an automatic payout. You can say no. And you look at it, and you get your monthly statements from the treasurer, from the comptroller, and you look at stuff like that, and you say, you know what? I don't think it's a very good time right now to spend $256,000. So you vote no. Just because it's in a budget doesn't mean you have to spend the money. And it's strictly up to the seven people sitting on this board to do so.
That's right.
I learned that lesson one time, and I take it to heart.
And, and, and something that all us council members can do, because I give you kudos for saying, look, I don't fully understand this stuff 100 million percent, and I get that. And I've done it myself many a times. I say to comptroller, hey, you know, can you explain it to us in just plain English? Because just like in his industry, in any other industry, they start talking in industry lingo. And this is easier for them than it is for us, because it's not our specialty. So there's nothing wrong when I'm saying to all the council members, if there's an item you don't fully 100% understand, there's nothing wrong with saying, please explain it to me, in just layman's terms.
Sure.
And that's what I've asked. And then also, if you remember, I also asked the comptroller right away, he's been very good at complying with this, if you remember, including, and there it is right here. Yep, yep, this is the one I asked him for. I asked him to give us a memorandum, and he gave it to us, if you remember, explaining what each and every item, what the specific plain English meaning of it.
The vocabulary sheet.
The vocabulary sheet. And when he did the budget, he did it in also this format. And I, I mean, he did a lot, and this is one where he broke it down with the graphs, you know? So he's given us a lot of stuff. But again, if there's something you're not fully in full understanding, I mean, of course you're understanding it, but in full understanding, there's nothing wrong with asking him or go meet with him face to face. But thank you, Councilman.
Any other questions from any other council members?
All right.
Anybody from administration, mayor? Anyone? All right. Next up is going to be public comments. You will have two minutes.
We didn't do announcements.
I'm sorry?
We didn't do announcements.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
All right. The most important announcement I have this time is that the South Dirburn Heights Civic Association's normal meeting on the 26th of May, Thursday evening, 7:00 to approximately 9:00 p.m. It's going to be very special. We will be interviewing kind of a meet and greet with the three candidates running for the district, the 15th District for State House of Representatives. Questions that anybody wants to have asked, they can contact me, I'll get it on the agenda. We will have a moderator. And anyone that wants to see who these people are before they vote in August, November, it's a great opportunity to come out and meet them in person.
16th of November?
The 26th of May, 7:00 p.m. at 3335 South Beach Daily.
What time?
7:00 p.m.
All right.
And also, on Wednesday, if you're interested in the Ecorus Creek Commission, we will have that meeting at 6 o'clock, same location. We'll update what's been going on. Ali Dib will be there to present his findings as of today, that where we're going with that. Hopefully, we'll have the information on the drone that went across the creek a few weeks ago. So both are kind of important, if you're concerned about either the creek or who's going to represent you in the 15th District.
Is that this Wednesday?
Uh, next Thursday, a week from.
Oh, two Thursdays.
Yeah, not this, next.
Next week.
Okay. On a Wednesday.
Thursday, well, the creek is Wednesday, the representatives are Thursday.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other announcements from administration? Okay, see none? We'll go to public comments right now. You will have three minutes. Please come on up to the podium and state your name, city, and street.
Need to know, Mr. Michael Blackburn, are you speaking as a resident or as an employee from the city?
Resident.
Memorized it.
Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, Dirburn Heights. Usually councils, when they've done the budgets in the past, on this last day, council used to go through department by department to see if there was any changes. This might be the first budget ever that council did not make one single change in the proposed budget. Last year, you guys made a whole bunch of changes, and even when the mayor was on city council, council always changed something in the budget. Not one thing was changed in this budget. Not, and I don't understand, because you used to go through department by department, billing department, does anybody have, want to make any changes amongst you guys? Ordinance department, clerk's office. You didn't do that, not one, not one change was made.
I don't think...
Okay. I, go ahead.
I think we did make changes.
We did make changes during the meetings.
We didn't go department by department. And matter of fact, we even discussed the clerk's office, and then we made a change for the clerk's office, okay? And they negotiated that out because that's what we were discussing.
Yep, yep, they negotiated.
So, you know, we did do that. We went department by department. And if there wasn't, if we saw overtime, if we discussed stuff about overtime, and I think we discussed many things. So to say that we didn't go line by, or we didn't go line by line like we did before, we went department by department, and with the comptroller putting everything together, instead of having to go from department and go back to another page and look at this and then look at that fringe benefit, we combined everything together, and everything was much smoother, and that's why the questions weren't asked like they were in the previous years. And I know this is my sixth budget, and I had plenty of questions on previous budgets, but the way they were put, put forward, you didn't understand it like you could understand this one.
So short version of it, it was streamlined a lot more. And we did have discussion department by department during each and every one of those meetings. Now, it's a different format than in the past, I'll give you that, absolutely. But at the same time, don't forget, one of the things that we decided on when we started with this budget is anything that was a, of major discussion or needed further discussion, further looking into, if you want to call it, by either council members or what have you, we had it put on the side by our clerks, and we had items put on the side that wanted to further discuss. And like the councilman mentioned, on a lot of them, we resolved the issues right there and then on the spot, because of the streamlined format that the comptroller and administration brought forward. With that being the case, the one that was somewhat, needed the most time probably, was the clerk's office situation, at which point the clerk's office and the comptroller met, worked out the issues together, and came forward with something that was acceptable to all and beyond the council. But needless to say though, Mike, even right now, today as we speak, right now, somebody can still say, I want this item changed, and we can discuss it, and see what we approve or disapprove on Tuesday.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, is it's just different than the previous year. So usually, this last meeting, you guys would go through department by department after all these meetings that you had in the past, to see if there was any changes from all your discussions. And I think that's what Councilman Wenzel was getting at, was you went through and, okay, we had all these meetings, you know, do we want to make any changes to billing department? Nobody says, no, you move to another department, you move to another department. That way, if there was any changes, the comptroller can change them before next Tuesday's meeting. And I'm just kind of curious.
No, and again, there was changes, and keep in mind, Mike, that's an excellent question. Keep in mind, even tomorrow, hypothetically, let's say I could contact, you know, different ones, we could set up, you know, a meeting, let's say a special meeting, say we're going to, I don't know, add $100,000 or something, or subtract $100,000 from something. Technically, it still happened. But again, we had multiple meetings. The format changes for two, for two reasons. Number one, you've got a new body of council members in which direction they wanted to go. And number two, more importantly, between a new comptroller, a new administration, there's a certain way that you would have been used to, and I totally understand with, you know, God rest his soul, Mayor Palatko, he was the mayor, he had controllers under him, and he had a particular format that he probably preferred, and the comptroller probably put it in that format. That's what was always brought to council, so it would have been in that format that you used to. I get that. We have new mayor, new comptroller, new system that's been used. And I think it's worked, honestly, in my personal opinion, I can't speak on behalf of the rest of the council members, I believe it was for the better.
Okay.
But if there's something that's a question, you're welcome to ask it, of course.
No, just because the format was different, just asking.
I could get it, yeah.
And, um...
But I want to make it clear, it was not skipped.
Okay.
Make it clear. Wait, let's just make sure he finishes his questions.
No, no, but respond to him too, because the resolution that we're talking about being uploaded, that's the new one with the changes.
Right.
The one that's supposed to be on the website.
And I want to speak as an employee for a second. When you guys were talking about the excessive amount of overtime, overtime gets high when you're short on employees, because when you're short on employees, you need more overtime to keep the same level or better services than what you were getting. So when overtime's really high, your manpower is down. Our manpower is down. It's nobody's fault, nobody wants jobs. I understand it. But when manpower is down, more overtime is needed, and it seems like overtime is a bad word, when you say you want, you know, you want to cut overtime, which is true. But as overtime is slim right now, some things are not getting done as fast as they would have been because of certain things. So when manpower is down, the overtime is going, is going to be high, because you got to get that same level of service done. When you have, in the winter time, when you have short, you know, when you're short on employees, winter time, it snows, you got to come in earlier than what you would to get the snow done in the same amount of time that you want to get done. So it just causes more overtime, and I think overtime's being treated like a bad word right now. Thank you.
So I don't disagree with you, Mike, in terms of, I understand where you're coming from, because of lack of employees. At the same time though, my preferred method is each department would come forward with either, one of, one of the two, preferably ahead of time if they can. This month, we're going to need X amount of dollars in overtime. And us as council members can decide if that's going to be workable or not, and ask additional questions. Or at the very minimal, at the end of the month, come to us month by month instead of yearly, because yearly, it's almost impossible to decipher what happened. Like, you know, like, let me give you an example, police, and that's just as an example. I don't want to be pulled over when I walk out of here. Okay? But just as an example, police, almost a million dollars in overtime, right? So right now, I ask the question, what was that million dollars used for? I mean, you know, you're talking about a year's worth. There's no way you could go back and give the, I mean, you can, but obviously, it wouldn't be practical to go back and see what a year's worth. But if you came every month and said, you're using, like hypothetically, in DPW, you know, $50,000 in overtime, then I or other council members are going to say, well, what's going on here? Well, it's an employee, a lack of employee situation, it's whatever. Then obviously, we could work on it right there and then on the month. That's why my personal preference is monthly, they give us either the budget for overtime or how much they actually spent in overtime. That's my personal preference. So I'm not saying it shouldn't be around at all, but we got to minimize it as much as we can, preferably by additional hiring.
And that, yeah, and I'll say that helps with more employees.
Absolutely. And I know the employment situation now, I get it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other residents in the audience? Come on up.
Rachel LaPointe, Merrick Street, Dirburn Heights. If the updated budget with the changes that were made, which I don't believe any were made at meetings, the study sessions, I think they were all made at outside meetings, like you mentioned, the clerk had talked to the comptroller separately, and that's when the changes were made. They weren't made at that meeting, when it was discussed.
I don't want to go in the wrong direction. Absolutely, they were made at the meetings. The situation with the clerks is, we talked back and forth, and it was just a little bit of discrepancies between the two of them. So we're not going to sit and go into...
Right.
I hate to say this, an argument, so I said to them, I said, work it out.
Right.
Come back to us with what you want, and we'll approve it or disapprove it, or maybe make changes.
Right.
So it was not in closed meeting type of thing.
And, no, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, I'm not trying to imply that it was an open meetings issue. But when they brought you guys the numbers back, the public did not receive them, because Because that updated line item budget was not published on the website. So how are we, the public, supposed to be able to come to you tonight for the public hearing if we did not have the information? How can we give you our comments and concerns if we never got the updated information? Especially if there's things that happened not at meetings, that were okay to happen not at meetings. I'm not saying that was wrong. How are we supposed to comment?
Sure, no, I totally appreciate that. So let me, let me mention that specific item. That specific item was some funding that was in regards to elections, uh,
I, yeah, I know which one it is. Yeah, the elections, yeah.
Yeah, but once they cleared it up, then they brought it back, and we discussed it and, and approved it, and it's all a part of the budget. But go ahead, Controller.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Every change that was made, every change that was made was brought out loud to the council with the dollar value, and it's, and at certain times, even the department, the department number was also given. Every change was highlighted, every change was told to the council, there was discussion, uh,
Right, the corrections that you made, yes.
Comments could be made by, from members, from members that were on Zoom, and comments could be made, uh, from members who were in the audience. So all that was presented, every change, uh, was highlighted to the council and was discussed out loud here in this room.
If the public does not have a record of that, not everybody can attend the meetings, not everybody could view the meetings perhaps. Maybe someone's deaf blinded, mute, and can only read a document, but they want to email you their comments before you vote on it. If they don't have that line item thing on the website, how are they supposed to comment? And I don't expect an answer. It's more for you guys to think about. How could we tell you what we think if you don't give us the information? And that's all. Thank you.
But I, and, and, thank you, but I'd like to answer you on that. Because I can tell you for myself specifically, I've said it publicly many times, had many conversations with the mayor about that, had many, 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 enough to maybe they were almost ready to throw me out the clerk's office, conversations about making sure that everything is transparent, everything is accessible, up to and including, speaking with the clerks right now, and I spoke with Vince too, you know, the planning commission, the zoning commission, everything's gonna be accessible. So I don't want anybody to get the impression that anybody, including administration, is trying to block anything from being accessible. Everything has been fully accessible, including each and every one of these meetings that has been on Zoom. So people do have access to it, and of course, in person. And of course, we have newspaper reporters reporting it, and of course, a lot of things are being put up on the website. So there's multiple avenues for residents to be able to access it. If it's a case where somebody said, you know, can't read or whatever, or can't be here, I mean, we've, we've put multiple venues. If we get a problem, if it becomes problematic for some residents, then whatever can be conceivably changed, we will definitely change it.
Council Chair.
Yes, Council.
I just got a quick question, and I'm just kind of like food for thought here. Uh, and I'm gonna use the clerk's, uh, situation just as an example. I know we went over, uh, it was seventeen thousand dollars. Is that correct?
There was a couple different issues. Seventeen thousand was one, thirty five thousand was another. I'm sorry?
That was worked out, correct?
Yes, but I don't know, I know that I emailed the council chair to say that we, um, that we resolved that. But I don't know what was discussed in the public.
Okay, but it was, it was resolved.
Yes.
So I, I go back to the thought that, did we ever come to the public and say, hey, guys, we went back to this line item? Uh, was that, because I,
Yes.
I'm just asking, because I, I mean, I don't wanna call it,
It was discussed, I don't remember word for word, but it was discussed, yes.
It was discussed. And, and Council Chair, I just gotta say one more thing. Mr. Supura, with respect, if I'm gonna ask a question, please, I mean, I don't want to be insulted. I mean, if somebody asks us a question, it's, it is okay. I understand your frustration. You did a great job with this, and I completely get it, but I feel like anytime a question is being responded, yeah, yeah, there's a lot of sarcasm that comes with it. With respect, just please respect us on here. That's all I'm asking for, please.
It was discussed, it was addressed.
When was that discussed?
Oh, wait, I mean, okay, let's be fair here. Now, can I go back to tell you, it was on, you know, January seventeenth at eight forty-two PM?
Come, hold the notes, the note wasn't discussed.
Right. We went back and discussed and approved the full budget.
Now, I, I did have that conversation, so I do recall.
Yeah.
I had a conversation with you, I had a conversation with the mayor, I even had a conversation with Mr. Supura.
And then if you recall, well, because it, it came back and said it was resolved, and this is how we resolved it. And then if you recall, I can't remember the word for word, if you recall Dana, when I said to you, okay, I think we're comfortable with that, and we can take this one off of the major discussion item, if you recall. But again, I don't remember word for word. We've had eighty-seven pages of discussions, so I, I can't remember word for word what was discussed, but we did have a discussion about it.
Right.
And approval, and it's still there. So if there's a question, it's still there for you to be able to ask it.
It's, it's not available to the public.
Now, I, I, I do know that you get, they get, we got something back, highlighted with what we discussed and what was resolved. What I, we did.
We didn't though. We, it's not publicly available. So if you'd like us to send employer requests, we may. But we don't have to keep discussing this. I made my comment. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the audience?
Sue Sachada. Mr. Abdullah, with all due respect, I can't cover your meetings with that level of thoroughness.
Of course.
I, I don't, I can't, I'm, I'm not paid to sit through all your study sessions and stuff. I try to cover some hot button issues, some things that are most urgent with the audience. But to tell you the truth, if you debate a topic for two hours, I'm not gonna go through that whole recording and try to distill it.
Sure.
You know, so I cannot serve as a substitute, you know.
No, 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 yeah, absolutely.
And, and I thank you for giving me credit for covering some things, but I cannot take that kind of responsibility for covering everything.
Right. What I was mentioning is that was just one of the formats available for people that want to know what is going on at city council. It's just one of four or five of them.
Yeah, and I appreciate you recognizing the fact that I actually do write about the council.
And I do read the paper every week. Thank you.
Paul Lanos, please.
I'm trying, getting old. Couple months, I'll be seventy years old, I'll be,
Oh, happy birthday.
Thank you. Zohair Abdalhaq, three, five, four, Rosemary Yagan. I have a question during the presentation of the controller at the beginning of the budget hearing. It showed in one of the slides that he budgeted one million fifty-five thousand dollars for overtime. Is that number correct still, Mr. Sabuda?
That is. The million, the number you're referencing, it wasn't applicable to overtime.
Oh, salary, I'm sorry, salary increases. Salary increases.
Okay, so what is your question?
Is that correct? Is that number correct? Am I quoting correct number from the budget? It was on the slide.
Mr. Sabuda, I can tell you where he's referencing. The one he's referencing is that one.
Yeah, he's talking about the, uh,
The one with the color,
The proposed budget, this one right here.
Proposed budget, salary increases, it was one million fifty-five roughly.
Yep, that's all, that, that number stands.
Okay. Can you explain, or anybody can explain, where this salary increase is going? That's a huge number to our city employees.
Those were, again, the, the one million zero fifty-five forty-seven in new and open positions. So the new positions, there was one in IT, we've, we've gone over this a number of times, in the study sessions. Uh, there are, there's a new position in IT, there's a new position in ordinance, okay? Then there's also, uh, five positions within the DPW that are open. And there were seven in the police department and three in the fire department that are in there that are open. That's what accounts for the million fifty-five thousand dollars that you're referencing. And again, that's all been discussed with council, uh, multiple times.
I'm not saying you didn't discuss it.
Very good.
Don't get too upset over the question, you know? Uh, you are a servant of the city, and I'm just asking as a resident, okay? I'm just sent question, and I send it in writing, asking to basically write down all the salaries, how much they are for every position in the city. I did not receive any response on that.
You emailed it to who?
To all of you.
No, there was, there was,
There was eight questions, one of them is the salaries.
Okay, okay, I'll try it differently.
If you didn't receive it, you're not reading your emails.
One moment, if, 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 I mean, Mr. Supura, the one million dollar plus for the salary, that includes all fringe benefits and everything, correct?
That is just the salaries. Yes, sir.
And includes directors increases, but on the salaries, Abdalhaq, we had HR come in. And this was a public meeting, I mean, I, I don't know exactly how many pages we got here, but went through department by department in terms of salaries and pay.
Okay, I, I did not, I did not receive a written response.
I, I just, And on those eight items, I'm sorry for extension, on those eight items, I personally walked it up to the controller.
I know you did.
And I said,
I'm not doubting that. I'm just saying I did not receive a response as of today.
We went, and I don't remember one for one specifically, but I remember we had addressed a multitude of them. I, I don't remember one for one right now off the top of my head, in regards to, do you remember when I handed it to you, Mr. Controller? The one with the eight items from the resident?
I do.
Yeah.
Council Chair, and I, and I, and I'm not too, if that's okay, Council Chair. And just to answer, Mr. Abdalhaq, I know, um, this budget, there was no raises given to any directors. And I'm not trying to insult your intelligence at all.
No, 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 I'm not.
But I want you to know that the approval of these raises, you were, took place with us on, on this board. Uh, so you were part of this body when these raises were given.
I'm not saying I did not participate, I'm not accusing anything
Yeah.
Wrong. The way it was written, salary increases, it sounds like salary increases to god knows who.
No, no, there was no salary increases, not that I know of. Was there, uh, to the, I mean,
There are.
There should be new positions, a new hire, and something in the budget. But to me, as a resident looking at it, I think that is one million fifty-five dollar thousand going salary increases. If I'm wrong, please correct me. That's how it was written if I, if I'm not mistaken.
There, there were two line items. You're confusing two different line items in the presentation.
Okay, which one?
The first one that you alluded to was the salaries for open positions. Okay, which we just covered here.
Okay.
Okay? The second one was a million dollars, uh, in step increases that are going to people who are working through their first year of employment to their second year of employment, or their second year of employment to their third year of employment, or their third year of employment, et cetera, et cetera. So the budget accounts for those step increases. Because underneath the contracts, those employees are entitled to those step increases. So we appropriated, we're recommending an appropriation to the council, and those are estimated to be one million point zero one five, one million, uh, fifteen thousand dollars.
I, I am not doubting what you're saying. All I'm saying, we need, you know, little clarification, so no confusion in the budget if somebody is looking at it. And I appreciate if I get my response from you guys
Okay.
on my, my eight questions. That's all I'm asking.
And, and, and that's what I'm saying, Mr. Abdalhaq, we did address those during the council meeting. Because I'm the type, my personal preference, instead of addressing them to you specifically, one by one, like to emailing you back hypothetically, we addressed them during the council, not council meeting, during the study session. So this way, anybody in the audience has access to information.
I understand, but I have a business too. I cannot come and attend everyone. That's why I put them in writing.
No, I understand. And to be fair, do you, do you remember, I don't remember which specific study session we had on those items, but we did address them. If you recall.
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
Do you remember which study se- I, I don't remember.
That you gave, that,
Do you remember which one, Marianna?
It was our second study session, yes, I recall it.
Just so you all know, I, I did track all of your requests and the date of when they were resolved. Um, I believe that Mr. Abdalhaq's, again, his list was very vast, so it was answered in various meetings, um, including four twenty-two, four nineteen, and four twenty-eight. So those were the meetings where all of your questions were answered.
I did not receive in writing, like I sent it in writing, I would have appreciated to be in writing. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
It's your right. Mr. Controller, do you mind replying via email and CCing us so that this way we know what you're giving specifically, Mr. Abdalhaq?
I want to vote.
I'm sorry?
I want council to vote on that.
Okay.
That's a lot of work.
Well, we're not, no, 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 but, but we've answered them during the coun- during the council study session.
Yes, we have. We've covered the ground, Your Honor.
So at the very minimal, within a resident's rights, at least a sentence or two answering his specific questions. Or if you feel more comfortable, if you want to call him, that's fine too. But I just thought via email, that's where all of us can get the same answers again.
I mean, again, that's why we have these public hearings. We go through it item by item. This is ridiculous. We have to go back, and we have to address each one as we, as, as the, the chief of staff's already mentioned what meetings. All you have to do is go to these meetings that she references, and you can, you can get all your answers right there. So now to waste another, you know, hi- his time to go back and recreate everything that he mentioned, it's, it's, you know, it's a waste of time. We still have to finish this budget. We have an audit that we have, we're preparing for right now. There's no time, and as you know, it's gonna be less than a month, and, you know, we still got a lot of work to do. So go back to these meetings that we had as reference, and you can see all the questions were answered in these meetings. I was there, everybody in the council was here, but now everybody's asking that question was here. That's not our problem. So whoever is asking the questions, they can go to these meetings and they can watch them.
Okay.
Mr. Abdalhaq?
My personal preference would be if we could at least email them back, at least a sentence or two answer. Then he could go to, get the specifics from the council meetings. That's my personal preference.
Mr. Abdalhaq, go ahead. Thank you, Council Chair. And I do recall the council chair bringing up the list, giving it, and I believe Mr. Supura brought up, you know, this, you know, this something. Yeah, and I believe he answered, I don't know if he answered all of them, I couldn't tell you, but I can tell you that most of them were answered, I, I, from what I recall.
Council Chair, he went through it item by item. I was here.
Yeah, I remember.
There might even be one meeting, actually. I, I, I recall, I do.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
But you're right, you want it in writing, by all means. You're absolutely correct on that.
If I wanted verbal answer, I would accept it verbal answer. Again, I do not receive from the city any salary to come every minute. That's why I sent it by email, and I handed it to you by hand. I have respect to a resident, at least, at least show some respect that you sent me one page letter and answered it.
Okay.
And this is not waste of time. This is my right as a resident to know what's, what's going on.
And I personally would be for it. If we spend ten, twenty minutes writing them back, I personally would be for it. You ask for a vote, it's not gonna be a formal vote. Anybody that, that would object to the controller providing that information via one or two sentence answer.
I'm all for it.
Anybody object?
Gary says he can't.
No, not voting. I'm just seeing if anybody objects to asking the controller provide them at least one or two sentence answers. Not a vote. All right, anybody have a problem?
None.
Okay. I would like to ask the controller if he could provide that. I think it'd be, in my opinion, if you provide them with one or two sentences, yes, they have access to it via video or, or, or being here. But I think for the time the resident spends putting these questions together, I think it's okay to give them one or two sentence answers. It would take us ten, fifteen minutes. Somebody like Dave Sabuda who does this twenty-four seven would be able to knock this off probably in ten, fifteen minutes. Twenty minutes, half hour.
I, I also wanted to say, Council Chair, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Abdalhaq, I, I think it's gonna be very vague answers, but if, I think, if you want to get the dates from, uh, Marianna, just take those dates down. Skip through it. There you go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any, wait, Councilman, go ahead.
Okay, uh, it was mentioned by the controller that the, the step program, just to let people know, the, the step program, it's, uh, it's part of your contract, or where first four or five years, you, you get a pay raise, it's figured in. Um, how many, do you have any idea how many people are in the step program in this budget?
I, I would, I'd have to, I'd have to look. There, there are quite a few.
There are more than twenty?
I, like I said, I'd have to look. I don't want to, I don't want to throw out a number. Uh, it's across all departments, all, all, all units. Uh, there's, there, there are, there are a few. I don't, I just don't want to throw out a number, Council.
There has to be a lot to equal a million dollars, I mean, a million plus, right? That's what that, that million plus is for the step.
Yes, sir.
Is that basically, or?
Oh, that's, that's definitely.
Definitely.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
That's all that million, million plus is for the step.
The step program, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Next up, go on up.
Mike Mackey, and I'm gonna use Zohir's address, three, four, five, Rosemary. There's a lot of tension in here. That's just a joke. See, Zohir, everybody knows it by heart. Anyway.
Wait, wait, but,
North Martha Street, Dearborn Heights. I was just joking. Just break the tension a little bit. I, I got a silly question, actually. I see a lot of,
Mike, did you state your address?
You did.
Yeah, I did. You want me to do it again?
You have to state your address, just a street name and city.
I said North Martha Street, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. I got a silly question. I see a lot of cell towers on city properties. Do we let people put cell towers for free, or are those allocated anywhere in the budget?
Mr. Chair?
Welcome.
They are allocated in the budget.
Okay, can anyone, I appreciate that. Can anyone tell me where they're at? I just want to review that.
Where the actual,
Yeah, just what line item.
Oh, sure. I thought you were thinking the physical location.
No, no, no. No, I drive by them, I see them all the time. I'm not worried about where they're physically located. I just want to see where they're at in the budget.
Yeah. It would be page, where is it? Okay, page six. I would be the, uh, one of them would be, uh, one oh one zero 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 six oh eight zero zero zero. Those are in, it's, that's part of it. And there is, There would be a piece of it. They're here.
You, you can get back to me. I don't need the an- I don't need the answer right now.
Yes, I'm rushing through the lines.
Take it, you can, let me know tomorrow.
Sure.
No big deal.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
It's line one oh one zero 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 six oh eight zero zero zero.
Right.
That's the end page. That's what you just said.
On a pool reembra- On a full reimbursement.
What page?
Cell tower. On page six.
Six.
Oh.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any way I can just get a breakdown of how many and how much we collect?
That's, you would have to, I, I got, I received that from the engineering and building, we're estimating a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then council chair, you had made a suggestion, I know it's a lot of work, but for us, like, it would help me if we had redlined the changes in the budget, is that possible, maybe down the line?
I'm all for it, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, if I may, okay, the software, we talked about this last meeting, you had asked for that, okay? So what ends up happening here is um the software, the B S N A software, first of all, the resolution that's in front of you as part of your package is what you'll be approving, and that support, that is supported by the ninety pages of, of budgets, budget pages that we went through. The B S N A software will not allow to, to color um the line item as we had spoken about, that's just, it's a fiscal impossibility. The only thing I can do is highlight the line items that were adjusted through our discussions with a yellow marker, and when they go up to um, we put it up there, you can see what line items were adjusted. Also, please know in your communications, we give you a summary of the net changes in revenue and expenses in your communication. So there were, after all changes were made, there were six hundred and ninety-five thousand in net operating revenue adjustments, and that was a reduction, and on the expense side, there was a total increase uh of two hundred and sixty-six thousand in appropriation increases across the board.
Are you referencing the resolution there?
No, no, in my letter to the council dated.
Oh, okay.
Which is uh, May tenth, twenty twenty-two, which was on this agenda. So there was approximately net, 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 six hundred and ninety-five thousand in revenue reductions, and an additional two hundred and sixty-six thousand in expenditure increases. So at the end of the day, we took almost a million dollar hit in adjustments, okay?
I appreciate that, for me, I just would, if po- I, I know you got a tough job and I appreciate how hard you're working.
Yeah.
For me, it would just be, this is what it was, this is the change, it's very simple, I can see it, um, that's all, but that, that's fine, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Council chair?
Yes, go ahead. Quick follow-up on uh, Mr. Mackey, um, the uh, the line item for the cell towers, what, what was the uh, final figure for that, you got it right there?
One hundred and eighty-five thousand?
Hundred and eighty-five thousand, no, um, those are for cell towers, what about, you know, um, for, for years we debated, or we talked about the five G antennas going up and and I was a, a big, big opponent on those, and ironically, they just put one up yesterday, a hundred feet from my front door. And uh, do we get revenue from them five G antennas, and you know, if so, that, they put one up in the city every day, how, how, how's that regulated? Do we get money for those? Now, how do you, how do you calculate that figure?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Okay, yes, they are part of the hundred and eighty-five thousand, uh, that's sitting down with the director of engineering and building, and when we were, when we were setting up the budget prior to delivery to the council, that number was given to us from, from the director, from engineering and building. And we went through those uh to ensure that we had a good number.
So that would, they, they said, uh, basically, the building and engineering knew how many they were going to put up this, this, this year, and they calculated from that?
Yes, sir.
Is that ba- I mean, is that the hundred and whatever, a hundred and eighty-six thousand, whatever, is that um including normal cell tower rental fees that we have existing already?
That's my understanding, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other members of the audience? All right, uh, on Zoom, we, looks like we have uh two hands up, is that correct? So Madam Clerk, can you let somebody on, or?
Hussein.
All right, Hussein, go ahead, you have three minutes, city, street name, please. Hussein, can you unmute yourself? All right.
I did it twice.
All right, no problem, we'll go to Leslie Wendless now, and then we'll come back to you, Hussein. Leslie, are you there, can you unmute yourself?
I'm unmuted, can you?
There we go. All right, go ahead, Leslie, three minutes, please.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
But maybe talk a little bit louder, I don't know, for whatever reason, it's a little bit low here, it might be our technology here.
Okay, my name's Leslie Wendless, I live on Annapolis Street in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, is that loud enough?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so um, one of the responses to a lot of these questions has been that we can do uh budget amendments. And I don't think we need to be like accountants or controllers to understand that budget amendments are great because things come up that you can't plan for, but I think that it shouldn't be used as a response to legitimate questions about outstanding issues. So we know about the pending contract negotiations, the possible election cost increase, and whatever else was cut from the budget, we know about that now. So we should be producing a full comprehensive uh budget, like right now, that addresses these big issues. I would like clarification that the clerk's office and the parks and recs department both had their budgets fully restored to what they originally proposed. Um, in my opinion, Mr. Subuta comes off defensive when he's asked clarification questions, which is why I have personally chosen to be quiet throughout these hearings, and then I can just hold you all accountable throughout um the year. However, it's imperative that our elected officials feel comfortable asking questions, and to me, the more questions you ask, the better. So I support Councilman Wenzel and everything that he brought up today, and to be more specific, I'm really concerned about our union workers. I'm concerned about the total cost of attorney fees because it was broke down by department instead of one line item. And I'm still unclear about the salaries with everything lumped together, because the handout that you provided to everyone in person last week is not available online for those of us who are attending via Zoom. All right, last I want to know, are we able to see the original budgets that were submitted by each department prior to the changes that were made to the one that was posted publicly? I am personally interested in uh that information, and I have two separate um comments that are not related.
Sure, go ahead.
One, I believe informal A D A complaint that was.
Wait, wait, Leslie, you got cut off after you said I believe.
Can you hear me now?
Wait, wait, it's, it's on our end, it says your internet connection is unstable, give me a sec, okay, go ahead now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I believe one of the reasons that we're offering the hybrid meetings is because of an informal A D A complaint. But regardless of the reason, since we're offering it to people, I think the people on Zoom should be treated fairly. In the future, I would really appreciate it if the public comment was rotated between the people in person and the people on Zoom, because you did have other hands up, but they left because of the amount of time it takes to get to the people who are on Zoom. And my last comment is that one proven way to reduce the amount of money that you're spending on overtime is to simply increase the amount of money that you're paying for the positions so that you can attract employees. That's it for me, thank you.
Good points, thank you, Leslie, appreciate it, uh, I can answer you um, the, the first one in regards to recreation department, other department, if they got what they asked for. I can tell you every, based on our, all of our conversations, every department just about did not get everything they asked for, because obviously we have budget restrictions within the fifty-seven million that we have available to be able to spend, so um as the controller and administration mentioned, you know, people came up with a lot of their wants and needs, and there was, you know, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, whatever it happens to be, and then when they negotiated back and forth with administration, then they came to an agreement as far as what they're going to bring forward for us as council members to give final approval or disapproval of. So if you're asking, your question was, did they get everything they initially asked for, more than likely not, including with Kim Lauren Selch, we had her during one of the budget meetings, and I know for a fact she didn't get everything she asked for. Some things with her and other department members had to be bumped off to, you know, uh, the next year, or maybe two or three, as we have funds available to be able to meet a lot of the needs and wants. Was there any other answers you needed to give to the controller?
Uh, Mr. Chair, you covered the ground.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hussein, are you able to, and by the way, um, Madam Clerk, I think it's an excellent idea by Leslie. I, I thought this is a more fair way for people that came in person to have them go first, but you know what?
We can.
No big deal, if I forget, can you please remind me, we'll switch them up. Thank you, Leslie, Mr. Hussein, can you unmute yourself, please?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yep, now we can.
Thank you, council chair, I tried to unmute myself a couple of times, but I would not love for some reason.
Wait, wait, Hussein, you're cutting off, sorry enough you're away from the mic. Do you have the microphone close to you?
Is there any better?
A little bit better, yes. Go ahead. Hussein, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, yes, go ahead, start.
Try to speak a little louder. A little more loud.
Council chair, I got a question for Tom, uh, for Councilman Wenzel, your mic, please.
Yeah, go ahead, I, we could barely hear you, but go ahead, you may have to talk a little bit louder, please. Hello, yeah, make sure you don't have to start moving, Hussein, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you guys hear me?
No, ju- right now, just the words, I can hear you, but be- before that, nothing was heard. Want to try again?
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, now I can hear you a little bit better, go ahead.
Okay, I got a question for Tom, uh, Councilman Wenzel, if you don't mind, please.
Go ahead.
We had several budget meetings throughout this whole uh session right now, and unfortunately, he only showed up to few of them. And now during the last meeting, he decided to question items that were previously presented, previously discussed, previously resolved. I mean, is there, is there any explanation for, from him, why wasn't he able to attend those meetings? Or taking family vacations, it's more important to, to a council member, and now down the road, when it's time to get the budget wrapped up so we can move forward, it's time to delay.
Okay.
Council chair?
Hold off, let me just make sure he's all set with his questions, we want to make sure we give him his time, were you all set, Hussein?
No, I, I got another.
No, no, I'm, I'm going to give him an opportunity to answer, absolutely, I'm making sure on your end, was that your last, was that the end of your uh time, or do you have additional?
I got a different question, but I would like for me to hear from the first council chair, please.
Okay, but, so I'm going to let him answer after your second question, let's make sure we, we finish your time and we'll go ahead and, did you have another question, I, I barely hear you. No, it's not a personal question. Were you all set, Hussein?
I'm saying I got another question, but I would like to hear his.
Okay, no problem, so stop the time, okay, Councilman Wenzel, go ahead, if you'd like to answer.
Yeah, sure, I um, I, the first few meetings, I was out of town, but I did attend all the meetings uh when I was out, out, uh, through Zoom, I was. I did, didn't I most of them, I was, yeah, I, I was on every meeting on, on Zoom, but uh, the, the few, the, 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 the two or three that I didn't attend, I did attend on Zoom, so I was there, and I did, I did speak up, a couple, you know, I was there and I, I, I made comments during the thing. So you're, you know, that part of your question, I think, is that, that good answer, or were you, you want more? I don't know what else to say.
I mean, if you, if you attended all those meetings, Councilman, uh, I believe you had the ability, just like any other council member, put your question back then.
I did, yeah, I did, a couple of times I was very upset too during uh the Zoom meeting that I was attending.
Okay.
I think the council p- chair, the chair probably remembers a few times I was pretty upset, you know, I did, so you're, you're, you're not a hundred percent correct there, I'm sorry. I did, I did voice my opinion during the Zoom meeting I attended.
Well, if you voiced your opinion, Council, uh, Councilman Wenzel, I believe you had a lot of discussion, and I brought forward to you a lot of points that, yes, some people in the city do deserve raises, who are working super hard, but honestly, I'm not in favor for asking for, uh, for raises for just union worker, and I believe we had the discussion before, I even brought it up to the council, uh, to the council meeting before, and I'll repeat myself again, it's real bad to use personal things on behalf of the resident. And it's real bad as a council member to be spreading bad rumors about city entities to a lot of residents. And I hope you understand what I'm talking about, if you'd like to clarify more, you got my number, you may call me, and we can have another conversation as well. Thank you, council chair.
Thank you, you know, I, I, I uh, I was elected to represent the residents of Dearborn Heights, and every decision I make is uh on their behalf to, to do what I think is best for them. I don't have any agendas, I've been accused of having an agenda, the only agenda I have is to be fair, and if that's not what people think I sh- I should be doing, then sorry, that, that's what I'm here for, I want to be fair, and I, I back the administration on many, many things, I've got the right to have my opinion and to fight for what I think is right. Anybody that uh thinks otherwise, I don't care about you then, I've got my opinion, and everyone has their opinions, I never objected to anyone making opinions about me, making comments about me, I really don't care, I, I never have about what people think about me, except for the voters, and uh, it shows on election day, thank you.
Thank you, councilman, any other members of Zoom? I don't see any, do you see any other ones?
I don't see any, yes.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience, all right, we see none at this particular point, we're going to go ahead and move to adjourn, and then we'll have the next one is the next study session, which is Warren Valley Golf Course, but what I'm going to do is, after we move to adjourn, I'm going to, but yeah, some, yeah. Af- yeah, after we move to adjourn, I'm going to go ahead and take uh, take a seven, eight minute break, and then we'll go ahead and start with the next one with uh Warren Valley. Councilman Muscat.
Support.
Okay, motion to adjourn, supported, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Bedu, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.